Thank you very much, everyone, and good evening. My pleasure tonight to reintroduce Father Peter Lottin, chaplain of the Bell Regis in Sfarn Catholic Parish, to have an afternoon with the prayer. Thank you, Father Peter.
I think this week is a week of remembrance, a week of worship. Now going to be unaware of the tragedy that has been taking place. So I'm going to include that call in our prayer. As we gave their lives or lost their lives to the violence, we pray to all who were dead, lost their homes, their possessions, their life, their wellbeing. We pray for those who felt the very generous spirit, the comradeship of people rolling up their strength to getting in and helping. We can thank the community spirit in response to the big story of rebuilding. We can take many examples from 50 years ago, and we think about our response to different things that happen, our responsibility, our opportunity, and our open hearts. We pray that each one of us may learn from the violence, and the heritage we have is not just a memory, but an inspiration to be better people and a better community. To make this prayer through Christ our Lord.
And before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the original inhabitants of this land, and pay respect to elders past and present. Also remind everyone present that tonight's proceedings are visually audio recorded, and will be available on the trans-website later this week. Thank you. Clear the meeting open, and ask for confirmation minutes for 16th of January and the special planning authority meeting on 23rd of January. Thank you, Alderman Piers, second of Alderman Chong. All those in favour? Carried unanimously, and it's just been pointed out that Alderman embarrassed his late apology, so reporting his apologies for the minutes, please. Mass communications, several items. Firstly, Alderman Hume and James and myself attended a smaller ceremony from the Harris Council Group, and they have given us a certificate of appreciation for their community support grant, which was put to very good use by Ambacuna, so if I could table that. Also, we received a plaque from the Australian Government Department of Immigration and Border Protection, thanking this council for its long contribution over many, many years towards the new citizenship program, and hoping that we will continue to be involved in the future. So that's quite an impressive looking plaque, and I'll table that as well. I would also ask for the minutes' note with regret the passing of an old friend and close colleague in terms of Deirdre Flynn last week, and that her funeral will be on Wednesday at Poffal. Another communication is that I met with Minister Hitting on the 18th of January. He was interested to talk about a review of bus services in southern Tasmania, or across Tasmania in fact, and the contracts for the non-metro bus services due to be renewed next year. And he was pretty keen to work with councils and ensure that the new network would see the all bus service providers come up with an integrated timetable so that people could use a green card to get saved from Sorrel to the university or wherever by switching between buses seamlessly on a common timetable. Minister Hitting also asked about council's interest in Cambridge bypass, and I noted that we, in December, signed off on the Cambridge master plan, and it was predicated on the Cambridge bypass going ahead. And he asked that I write advising if such, and I've now dispatched that letter as well. And I'll make sure to circulate to all Alderman's. That's been ready, General Manager, please. I can't hear anything. Mr Van Heek, can you do something about the record, please?
We note this first world problem is big governance in a drastic way.
That confirms item three. Item four is the couple notes workshops conducted on the 23rd and 32nd of January in the January Conference of Harry. Thank you, Alderman Chong, second of Alderman Surley. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest or of Alderman or of worship.
Yes, your worship, 11.3.1.
Thank you very much. Any other declarations? Item six, tabling of petitions. I know they're not on the agenda, so any from the floor? Public question time, are there, there's no matters on notice, are there any questions from members of the public? I'll take it as no. And there are no invitations from members of the public, no motion on notice. Reports from outside bodies, southern Tasmanian Council's authority, there was a board meeting today, so it's a bit too quick for the minutes. However, I can advise that Mayor Martin Evans from Dunt Valley was elected as a rep on Destination South, on the Board of Destination South. Mayor Roseanne Hayward was elected to replace Mayor Kerry Vincent on the Waste Management and Waste Strategy Group. Mr Gary Randall, who's been on to some of us, was appointed as a part-time secretariat to STCA. His task will involve about one day a week on administrative matters for STCA, plus half day a week for support to the Waste Management, Waste Strategy Group. And his first task will be to attend to the quarterly report last June or December. So hopefully, the next meeting, we may be in a position to table the December quarterly call for STCA. Copeting, refuse, dispose of such an authority, Campbell.
Just one thing, there's invitation coming out for the spec in at the site on Thursday of February.
That's to Alderman, this is Alderman Campbell. And that'll be a memo in a second. Southern Waste Strategy Authority, Alderman James. Thank you. And the Tasmanian Water Corporation, the agenda there has a recommendation that the quarterly report of the 30th of December be received. Thank you, Alderman. Cusick and second of Alderman Chong, any discussion on the quarterly report from Tassaway?
It made a question on notice. In page eight of the Tasswater Report, the criteria is to operate business in a manner which is consistent with average appetite, and there are 10 major compliancees. And I'm just a little concerned that perhaps this is not really the issue. So if you look at what I'm thinking.
Are you able to take that, or we take on that?
Yes, I'm actually attending the quarterly briefing on Wednesday, I think, and I'll, yes, because it's the same time as the funeral, I'll seek an answer to those questions and raise the matter.
Thanks, Alderman Chong. Okay, so I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. And moving on to 10.2, reports from council and special committees, this is Tracks and Trials Committee, that their report be received. Thanks, Alderman James, second of they. Alderman, thank you.
Now, I'd just like to draw council's attention to two matters. First of all, the Blessington Coast Reserve Track. We walked it on Sunday, and for those who are pretty quick on their feet, I reckon you could do it in 20 minutes, had a jog. Took us three quarters an hour, but we had a swim at halfway mark. But the track in parts is very steep, particularly up on the cliff halfway along the track, and there's quite a drop. So I'm not sure as to whether there may be some barrier required down the track, I don't think. The stage is very steep, and there is a lot of debris that's been pushed onto the side of the track, which is sort of to sort of form a bit of a, if you call it a cushion, if anybody tends to slip. But other than that, it's tremendous, and it's well worth having a look at. The other one is in relation to, on page 32, the Kangaroo Bay Ribulet Track. There is a little bit of a hiccup there, but that's still being worked out with regards to Eastlands and council. But it is open to the public as per Mr Graham's briefing report. I think he said it's now open to the public. And other than that, seek council support. Is it possible for us to have a little bit of a celebration or commemoration, because there's been a lot of effort put in by council to get this up? And I know there was umming and ahhing about a bridge over troubled waters, that's if you talk about the Ribulet. So is it possible for us to sort of have a, an opening? As we had on, remember, Alderman Piers for them all? We had a... Oh, sorry, yes, as Alderman Piers would confirm, as the mayor. So it would be appropriate to have an open, and I think Mr Mayor could be arranged it.
We can arrange that if that's what council just says.
Right. Any other questions, comments on the Tracks and Trials Committee? In that case, I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Bicycle Steering Committee, the Chairperson's report be received? Second of Alderman Chong, does anyone care to speak to that report? Case of the recommendation, all those in favour? Carried unanimously. Are there any other reports from the council or special committees or other representative bodies? Alderman Chong.
I've had a minute of the Richmond Advisory Committee and the Aurora Community Centre.
Moving on to item 11, 11.1, that the information in the weekly briefing report is 16th, 23rd and 33rd of January, been noted. Alderman Surley, thank you, and Alderman James, are there any discussions? Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I refer to the weekly briefing report of 23rd of January 2017, and the Football Federation Tasmanian Development at Cambridge. On page 24, it says that there is a meeting of the FFT and the Premier scheduled to meet on Monday, the 6th of February, after which a public announcement is possible. I know it's early, but first my question is, has there been the meeting? And is council or any advisor in relation to what has transpired?
Through Mr Mayor, I'm not sure if the meetings occurred, and we have no knowledge of what's transpired, but we can follow it up during the course of the week.
And weekly briefing report.
And secondly, on that matter, there was some press announcement that the FFT was considering another venue on the Western Shore, and was seeking, my understanding, seeking funding for that site. Does that in any way preclude this particular matter going ahead in relation to funding?
Through you, Mr Mayor, my understanding of the debate in the paper about the Western Shore was over a possible stadium for a National League, or National League Soccer, National League, A-League team, thank you. It was, at least as I understand it, five years out, and I understand that FFT have an impractical agreement with Bel Rio or Tasmania to play their games there, certainly in the initial instance, but in either sense is unrelated to their proposed use of Cambridge bruising.
Actually, yes, that the info in them been noted, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, thank you. No matters to deal with under item 11.2, so advice that council now intends to establish a planning authority under the Looper, thank you, Alderman Walker. So it's 11.3.1, it's a development application at Tummana Road in Sfarn for change of use. Alderman Cusick, thank you, Alderman Hume, would you like to speak to that?
I think it's self-explanatory, Mr Mayor, since the change from, change from H to general residential, self-explanatory.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The key issue in the development is the car parking requirement, and the development doesn't meet the acceptable solution, but there's quite a bit of detail on the performance criteria, and I think one of the things that's worth noting in there is not only the note from the associated report that the development isn't expected to create a lot of car parking demand, but also that shortfall from the requirement in the acceptable solution is actually less than it was of the previous use, or the existing use.
Then the motion is, first of all, to end a part five agreement, and then approve subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Could we recall Alderman Walker, please? Moving on to, the next item is 11.5.1, which is Kangaroo Bay Public Car Parking Strategy. Now, there's four items there, A, B, C and D. I intend to take them together. If I could have someone move and second of Alderman, thank you. Alderman Cusick, thank you. Any speakers to the motion? Alderman Cusick, as second there, would you like to speak? Alderman James, I sense that you might be interested in saying something.
There was going to be a discussion on, one after the other, it's very odd, because in fact it hasn't happened. The item C, develop a concept plan for multi-level car park at the Bel Rio Yacht Club site at Shurri Connectivity, I just thought that might be an overdevelopment of the site, particularly if you're going to have that large hotel come education building, and then you've got a multi-story car park basically abutting it. It's going to be moderation in there in a sense. I'm supportive of part A, I think we need to have clear signage, and the development of lot four as a car park in that ministry design proved as we saw. But item C, and the D, develop concept plans and investigate funding opportunities for multi-level car parks at Winkley Percy and report back to future council workshops. Now, I think that is ideal, it's just that my concern is that part C, and it's unfortunate it's going to be taken as one, because I would have liked to have supported one, A, B and D, but I can't support C.
I do sort of concur in a different area to part C, because I know it does say consultation with Bel Yacht Club and key stakeholders. Now, I already know my fellow talking, some of the residents just over the road are getting a little bit nervous. And when we say consultation with key stakeholders, can we invite, I think some of the half a dozen residents, in? Nervous already, it does say key stakeholders, but I want to make sure they're included, because I want to make sure that they're happy, not all. The other proposal with Alderman wasn't happy, so if we just keep informed, I think that would be a very wise idea. I know it says key stakeholders, but I don't want those forgotten.
Yeah, I support the resolution including part C, and I just on the basis that we identified through the planning process that there's a shortfall of 84 spaces just associated with the hotel development. Now, that's something that we're going to need to develop car parking to meet. But in addition to that, there's still areas of the site which through the Kangaroo Bay Master Plan remain undeveloped, and there's going to be extra demand on top of that that's going to need to be met. So I think if we're going to look at car parking, we need to look at the long term, we need to look at a solution that doesn't just meet the needs of the site at the moment, but what the future needs are going to be as we continue to develop that master plan. And that's going to require, even just with the hotel development, it is a fairly dense development, there is going to be quite significant car parking demand in that area, and particularly when you add possible ferry services to that, which is another future use of the site. Need to look at the long term, we need to look at the future, and there is going to be, I think there's going to be significant demand. As if we, they'll be proactive and have that demand met rather than ending up with residents complaining with this.
Yeah, I happened to be trying to find a car park in Percy Street the other day, and totally, totally full up with the activity that is occurring in that area. Whole Bel Rio key area has come to life with the results of the health up, and it's amazing how much traffic is now generated through that area. So this plan to actually address the immediate need and then address something that I know Alderman McFarlane and I have been going on about Percy Street as a vision for catering for Blumston Arena as well, possible ferry terminal. So this is fantastic, and the community, there's a lot of, there was concern that the parking is never addressed about time, and this is the time, and it's just very taxing.
Yes, we spoke about multi-levels at Winkley Place and in Percy Street, but I think that the overall impression, I certainly got to Staras, Bel Rio Yacht Club area was a deck off road level, and we, and it says multi-story in the report here for multi-level, so I would have thought that initially it'd be a deck off Clarence, off Cambridge Road, but it can be worked through, and that's what happens first, and it has to come back, and it does get extra levels on it, they would be subject to further development applications to delayed time.
The others, Alderman Chong.
Mayor, I actually really like the wording of the, and I'm very happy to see that we're ensuring connectivity for all users, and that actually includes commuter cyclists. And it's really pleasing to know that there's actually a meeting taking place, Tracks and Trials, and Bicycle Steering Committee. Really need to look at this area holistically, it's really starting to hum, and it can only get better, but we need to work through the particular issue. So I actually totally agree with Alderman Piers in relation to the key stakeholders being actually involved. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Alderman Walker.
Sorry, Mr. I will be supporting the motion as it stands to omnibus A, B, C and D. The thing around this is that it's forward planning. Even if we had the specs built today and the right site, it isn't going to happen tomorrow or even early next year. And by actually working up the options, it enables us to have a better discussion with the community around them. So all my journey with council on the subject of car parks, it's sort of been, the one be hit somewhere here or somewhere there, you know, if you're like pitching your master Winkley Street or another, and I think what we're coming up with here is a multi-option approach, and again, it's not going to be something that happens next month or probably even next year, but we are at a reasonable risk of getting caught short with, I suspect, the demand once this area gets built up. I think it will, as has been mentioned, develop other unmet demands, and to our colleagues that are jetting off to Auckland, if you do happen to have a couple of spare hours, catch a ferry across to Devonport on the side of the harbour, that wharf has excellent, if you like, bike storages to look at, and it also has mediocre car parking to also have a look at to see what shouldn't be done. So I'll support the motion.
I'm very happy to support this motion. It's a long time coming from the Strategic Board. Why does this happen at this stage? The development of car parking in the whole of the Bel Rio area has been essential for a long time. The recent approval of the hotel on the wharf gives us a key concept area to base any future planning on, and I think that it's an ideal time to really get a foot in the door at looking at what the future needs are for the whole Bel Rio area. Everything within A, B and C is constructive towards a long-term strategy, and so I definitely support the offer recommended.
Motion is then the four elements, A, B, C and D, all those in favour? Against? Carried. Moving on to item 12, Alderman's question time, there are no matters on notice. Are there any questions without notice? Alderman Chong.
One question is, why is it taking so long? There's two aspects. One is the cricket rooms we've built, it's been fencing round it there for so long, and when I was over there at the cricket club, I said, why is it going so long? I said, there's only ever one person here or nobody here working. And the question is, why is it taking so long for that job to be finished? But while I'm going on that, I'll say the same at Kangaroo Bay, their tour and whatever, there only ever seems to be one person or nobody working the game. Why is it taking so long to get both those projects in a major area of ours, but why haven't they completed?
President, the Kangaroo Bay Park.
Question is, do we have the traffic count figures for Begonia Street? Begonia Street has become absolutely insane. It seems about every two months, it contrives, and then a week or two weeks later, it's an absolute shambles. It's an embarrassment to the city, it is. So do we have the traffic count?
The traffic count after all the highway that was finished, but I can't remember the two again. Did you look at those statistics? Praise to the question, now the figures are out, have we come to conclusion about what we're doing with the Begonia Street?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I need to actually probably have a look at those figures themselves, because the last lot...
because the last lot of figures I saw, which were taken only a couple of weeks after the interchange opened, I asked for figures that perhaps might be more representative of a change in behaviour rather than immediately afterwards. Now, I don't know, so I looked at whether those further figures have been taken, but I think you needed sort of a three or four month gap between the opening of the interchange and to establish whether there was any regular pattern of change that occurred. So I'll, I need to pursue that and have a look at it, and we'll come back here.
Maybe we can raise it as a workshop.
Yeah.
Now, sort of recommend that maybe we have a school today, do the traffic count, give the money to council, do another one.
Well, it may be worth coming back to a workshop with the findings. Alderman Jim?
At the risk of sounding like a broken record or a scratched CD, I was wondering if there's been any progress on the hand of management authority to council of the Kangaroo Bluff Battery site.
Through you, Mr Mayor, perhaps if you'll, that's not a Dorothy Dixon, but I did happen to pursue this matter today, and had a emails late tonight that I saw from Parks and Wildlife, if you can just bear with me one moment. Here we go. From Shane Breen at Parks, Andrew, my apologies, my response to your inquiry did not reach you, you wouldn't address in the address. Ashton has asked me to provide you with an update on Belrevo Port. Firstly, thank you for your letter on the sixteenth of December expressing interest for council to become the managing authority of the port. Parks and Wildlife Services is currently preparing documentation that supports the transparent management of the port to Clarence City Council. This is required advice from a number of specialists within the agency to facilitate this process, which should be finalised shortly.
Question, Mr Mayor, has he given any indication on what shortly means?
Through you, Mr Mayor, given that I've got this at six twenty-eight tonight, I'll pursue that. Based on lots of hell about ideas.
You're better than this, Mr Mayor.
Alderman Chong?
Alderman Khan?
I'd just like to follow up on the predicament for the stope and crepe with the car body, and I take on board the fact that the general manager has had holiday, and upcoming appointment with the police. However, I'd like to know if there has been consideration between upper management on the future removal of those.
I'd have to get an update report on that, and we'll put it in this weekend, this Friday's briefing report, if I can, please.
Mr Mayor, I just would like to know if the toilets at Roche Street, which is the Lord of Dale Yacht Club, if there's been any thought to their design as yet?
Through you, I'm assuming you come back to this.
Complimented, does that mean then there's opportunity to actually have them input into the design?
Through you to, I suspect to land up with Mr Toohey, can we, are you aware of other councils in particularly southern Tasmania that are directly providing after-hours school care?
I'm sure you can.
This might end up with Mr Bada. The people that we employ to provide the after-hours school care, I believe are directly employed by council, so I'm wanting confirmation that we'd be paying payroll tax for those positions.
Through you, Mr Mayor, yes, they're directly employed.
Firstly, in relation to the environment protection notice that was issued on the Blunston Arena, Cricket Tasmania lodged an appeal against the EPN with the Resource Management and its appeals tribunal on fourth of January. Mr Mayor, through, I think Mr Toohey may be able to advise on this, council and Cricket Tasmania had a ten-a-day preliminary meeting at the tribunal on the nineteenth of January. Will Mr Toohey please provide an update in relation to that, please?
Question, Mr Mayor, in relation to Torren Street, the private officer please provide an update in relation to the petition that was lodged at council meeting last, and also too with regard to a number of matters that were raised in the petition, as far as safety and also the, one other matter, but perhaps the private officer could provide an update on a, when council will be issuing the matters.
Through you, Mr Mayor, the petition is required to come back to council at the next meeting. That doesn't necessarily mean council needs to resolve their position at the next meeting, but in the interim, we certainly will be coming back to council at a workshop either next Tuesday or the following Monday, Monday night, with some advice and some recommendations.
That concludes Alderman's question time, item thirteen, close meeting. Alderman Piers, Second Ordinance Cusick, thank you. All those in favour? Carried unanimously.